Okay, I called us to order this regular scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for September 27th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Everyone, please silence your phones as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick. Councilmember Burns. Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to turn over the meeting to Councilman Mustafa Hamud.
At this time, I'd like to turn the... Oh, whoops. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Father Kenneth Chase from Sacred Heart Catholic Church, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who's able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God in the fullness of time and history, you've revealed yourself in your glory to the nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice. Through you alone, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, justice made sure. Tonight, we ask you, assist the city council assembled with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, that their work on behalf of the people they serve may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to the people of our community. May they encourage due respect for goodness and decency, for virtue and freedom. May they uphold the common good with prudence, with justice, mercy, and common sense. May they discharge their duties with honesty, integrity, with skill, and with care. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct their deliberations and shine forth in all their proceedings. May they seek to preserve peace, promote the common well-being, and the prosperity of all. We pray as well for those whose lives will be affected by the deliberations and decisions of those who are assembled here tonight. We commend to your unbounded mercy all the citizens and residents of our community, that we may be blessed in the knowledge and certainty of your love for us. May we be preserved in the peace which the world cannot give and enjoy after the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilman Hamud. Okay, at this time, just a quick announcement. Those of you that are watching in the audience or on the CD TV, our council colleague, Councilman El Sawafi, has been deployed, as we indicated on the last meeting, for his duty in the military of the United States Army. And he is going to be participating remotely through Zoom, and he is on there right now. So bear with us. We've tested it several times. We believe we're running properly. Councilman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you just fine, Council President.
All right, great. So at this time, we're going to begin with our public comment section. The council rules have recently been changed by this council, allowing for 30 minutes of public comment at the beginning of our meeting to allow the residents not to have to wait through the whole agenda. We do have comment cards that are filled out, that are green. We would like you to fill those out and bring them up as you wish. And I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that there is still a three-minute limitation. There's only 30 minutes set aside for the beginning of the meeting, but there's also unlimited time, excuse me, at the end of the meeting to address again the council for some issues. So at this time, we'd like to open up for public comment. If anybody's here to speak regarding the public, please step forward and state your name and address for record. And just a kind reminder, the clerk will be keeping a three-minute limitation rule.
Council President, member of council, I don't think I've ever taken three minutes yet.
No, you have not. I will verify that.
I just want to announce that this Friday at the Dearborn Historical Museum is our ninth annual beer tasting. We have three local breweries coming in. We've got a floral booth this year. The largest salad auction we've ever had. I think there's 27 or 28 items available for auction. We have two food trucks and a third ice cream truck. Along with the beer, we'll have root beer, apple cider, and a few other soft drinks available. You'll get three... With $30 advance ticket, you'll get six tastings of beer, six ounces each, and they're $35 at the door. It's a great time. We have clowns, palm readers. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's Halloween-oriented, so come in a costume if you want to. And you can see the work we're doing on the second floor of the Commandant's quarters, remodeling it. So I thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. And we do notice the work that you've been doing remodeling. I think it's a tremendous job, and thank you again. All right, so for the public comment, we do have Ms. Talib here to speak. Would you like to please come up and state your name and address for the record?
Sure, actually, my neighbor's going to go before me.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. I call the order, so the first one is...
I put all three of us on the same ticket, is that okay?
Well, no, one speaker at a time.
Right, but I just, for the purpose of... Because there was only two sheets there, so I put us three on the...
Okay, we have plenty of sheets.
Sorry.
So would you like to come up, Ms. Talib, first?
Yeah, I can... Actually, I'm going to read my mom before she's going to make the first comment, because I put all three of us on there.
Okay.
Is that my view?
It's fine, but you need to come up in the... To the record, so we can get your name and address to speak. Yeah, absolutely. You can bring your mom up.
Salaam alaikum.
Alaykum salaam.
Ani jayya.
So yeah, we don't have... We don't have Arabic translation live, so would you like to speak?
I can interpret for her.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll talk, and I'll interpret. Go ahead, Mom.
Ani jayya. Ikhilkon shan b'cerfina had the car wash lim khaliyana yaha. Arbaa wa ishin sa'ah. Ast'raguna, mahalluna shzainan. La gan b'haluna nim, la gan b'haluna ni'at. La gan b'haluna n'adharra barra.
I'm here to complain about the car wash on 7333 Wyoming in Dearborn, Michigan, 48126. The car wash does not allow us to sleep. It doesn't allow us to live in our home. It doesn't allow us to go outside and enjoy our home or use our land.
N'hadibana n'chillah hedim shikli. Binashan zanna'ayshin ha'ik. Sarit lan witt liyatin sini e'ati behedal bat. Wa ani rabat'aili feh. Wa ani badush hada izhabni min bai'ti. Tirmal al'car wash.
I've been living in that home for 32 years. I raised my children there, and I'm not going to be forced out of my home because of a car wash.
Okay.
That's it, Mom?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
My sister's also on that car?
Yes.
Okay, Najeeb, you want to come up and speak? Did you want to talk in Arabic today?
Hmm.
Okay, go ahead. Tell them your name.
My name is Nalutel. I live by the car wash. And every day, I hear that noise in my ears, and they give me a big headache. I'm like that, and it's annoying. And every day, I hear that, is there a disco there? The hotel there? That's not good. And I don't like it. And it's really, really bad for me, and it's annoying. I don't like that at all.
Are you done, Najeeb?
And you can handle it? Go sit in my house and see what I'm saying. If you can handle it.
Thank you.
All right?
Yalla.
Ms. Talib, are you in the same address?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, good evening, council members. Good evening, Zainab, Corporation Council, everybody in attendance here, and to my amazing neighbors who came to support us as well. We really are a tribe there. It really is a village there. We support each other. We stand with each other. And we've lived in that home for 32 years. My mom has no plans to sell her home. She's a proud, single mother who raised seven children on her own. And my mother should not have to be forced to sell her home. We're not going to shut up, and we're not going to put up. The only thing that's going to be silenced is that car wash. And we are not going to beg anybody. We don't want anybody's sympathy. We want your empathy. And empathy, to me, best realized at its highest potential, is action-oriented with verbs. Nobody would ever want this for their parents. Nobody would ever want this for themselves. I own and operate a company, and I take care of my clients. Through my headphones, through my Zoom trainings, I'm hearing base 24 hours a day. This is unreasonable. It's unlivable. And I understand you inherited a monstrous mess from the previous administration. We respect that, and we respect all of the amazing changes you've made. But what are you going to do if my mom decides to sell that home? What if there's another single mother there who needs a safe haven for her children? Is she going to have to inherit the same circumstances and conditions that we have? What do you tell those kids when they try to do our home? Because I wasn't allowed to do my homework there. I couldn't. I walked 10 miles to and from the University of Michigan, Dearborn. I used to have to sit at a library, or in a car, or in cafes until the middle of the night just to do my work. These are the things that we had to sacrifice. And I don't think that we don't have the tools to remedy this. It's time we put an end, and it's time we collectively say as a community, this is not going to happen in Dearborn anymore. No single mother should ever have to have this repeated to her. So I'm here today to also thank my neighbors for coming to support me, and they will make their own comments. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Mr. Eid.
Hello, my name is Atef Eid. I'm here behalf of my mom. My mom, she keep complaining, the noise, the music, very high during the day, during the night. And sometimes, when we called the cops, they said, anytime when you heard call. So we're not going to keep calling every 10, 15 minutes, every half an hour, call the cops, come see the music, you know? This is too much. We keep complaining, I don't know for how many years, and nobody listen. So thank God, no teenager lived there. Because if teenager, they live there, they can make a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eid. Okay, Chief, just for the record, this problem was brought forward under this administration, which is a total of 10 months. And I know you've been there 32 years. I've never had this complaint till I became the president of this council. I think we cleared that abundantly clear last time you were here. We also had a meeting with the director, which I was able to attend with the chief of staff, and went through the multiple scenarios. So I'd like the chief, if you're prepared to... Where is the status regarding the car wash? Because I know that our director, Mr. Tordi, was present. I was present via Zoom. You were present in the office, your mom, as well as our chief of staff. So Chief, would you like to give us like an update of where we're at, if you do have this available?
Yeah, I appreciate it, Council President. Thank you. Thank you to Ms. Talib and her family, and for the neighbors. We obviously appreciate your feedback, and it's extremely important to hear from all of you. As the council president mentioned, a few months back, we did meet with Ms. Talib and her wonderful mother. And we really did sit down and try to figure out a game plan, which we did. We have certain policies and procedures that we have to uphold as the city. And a part of that is a reoccup process. We are still going through that process. I know Ms. Talib reached out last week to Mr. Tordi and asked for an update. And right now, he's gathering the information from the inspector. So we'll hopefully have a more comprehensive response in a few days, once we get that. But it is still, Council President, to your initial question, it's going through the reoccup process. And once information is available, we will provide it.
Okay, and just for the residents, what happened is the business had changed hands, and the new owner did not follow the proper process in order to reoccupy the current business. And they found some violations there, and that was my understanding. I know, Ms. Talib, you want to shut them down, but it doesn't work like that. There's laws and rules, and we have to go through a process. And that's what we were going through. So I was unaware that there's been a halt or a delay, or maybe, I don't know what the status is at this time, but when I was at the meeting, my understanding was very clear that there was some product that the purchaser purchased that was never permitted, and that they were going to cease to use that immediately. Has that happened?
I'm sorry, I don't know what product you're talking about.
A part of the car... You don't know what I'm talking about? Okay, come on up. Come on up. We'll go over it. I mean...
If you could just say it, because that is...
I want to make sure it's a car... Well, I don't know exactly which part of it, but there was... We had identified a part of the car wash that was added on that was never permitted.
Oh, the automatic, the two automatic bays?
Yes. Are they operational?
Those are not operational. That's not the issue, the school?
No, no.
Yeah.
No, Ms. Talib.
Yeah, yeah. Those are not operational.
That is an issue, because it was put in illegally by the previous owner.
Right.
And I wanted to make sure that that was not operated until they...
There's no equipment, and they're empty.
Right. I understand, but it is an issue, because there... I want to make sure they're not operating even further illegally. So that was remedied?
Yeah, years ago.
Okay.
They forced them to... The zoning board ruled 5-0, that they stripped them of that variance.
Okay, before the new purchaser?
Correct.
Okay. So right now, we're dealing with the new purchaser, and they're still going through what they call reoccupancy applications?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure where we're at. I thought that that was... You said zoning board aspect. I thought there was issues there, that it was built without permits at the time. And the new owner inherited that, assuming that he could operate a business that he purchased?
No, the new owner knew because... So the new owner... Can we say names? I mean, that's public record.
You can say whatever you want. I prefer we just stick to what the facts are.
So the new owner... So the new owner purchased it in March, according to the documents I FOIA'd from Citi. And when he took ownership of it, that owner who handed it over to him is the one who got the variance stripped from him years ago, back in 2013. So our issue, up to date right now, doesn't involve the automatic bays, because that's been remedied.
Okay.
The chief complaint is the 24-hour operation and the egregiously loud sound from the patron radios, the unlawful parking, and the sound of the equipment itself. So like the hose, council president, we had talked about that piercing peep... Beeping sound, yeah. Councilmember El Sawafi, yeah, that's the one. The beeping sound when the water's about to be done.
Right.
And then for the vacuums themselves. I mean, if you turn about eight vacuums on at the same time, along with the water and the beeping sound, along with the commercial huge-sized trucks who unlawfully park in the alleyway, pointing their exhaust into our backyard, and then pull the hose out and spray their trucks with the soap and water coming all over our homes. Essentially, they've taken our backyard and our home.
So the trucks are parking... I know we talked about... So the truck is parking and blowing the smoke, and then washing, putting the soap onto your property as well?
Yeah, because the commercial trucks are so huge, they don't actually fit within the structure of the bays that are normally operational.
Right. No, I'm fully aware of that. I thought the issue was they were loitering and parking their temporal... I didn't know they were using the facility, because there's a facility less than a mile away...
Exactly.
Designed for trucks to fit in there. So a truck's pulling in there, but they can't use those machines, because they can't get it inside.
So they pull them out into the alleyway?
And spray it.
And wash their trucks right in the alley.
Okay.
And I... The last time I was here, before you all, I submitted pictures of those.
I remember the garbage in the... Which we... I thought we did send out our enforcement regarding the garbage out there that was in the alleyway and so on and so forth. I was unaware of trucks that were actually using equipment that they can't use, that doesn't fit for their truck. That's something new for me.
Yeah, I said, the last council meeting, I had submitted those pictures. There was a packet. I gave them to your assistant.
Yeah, no, we received them, but I... Like I said, my concern is the trucking aspect, because that's something that can be easily remedied with the police. So you're not calling the police when the trucks come and park in the alley?
Of course we are.
Okay.
But the police... I mean, God bless our police. I think I've said this so many times before. When they come to my home, like, we've... I feel so guilty calling about something like that. Like, I'm seeing what's happening, the chaos, the rollover accidents, the burglaries, the robberies. I thank you, Chief, for keeping our city safe, like, from the bottom of my heart. And I want you to know that your officers come to our home with so much respect and dignity, and they see our humanity. And I can't tell you enough how much that means to my family and I. They're really empathetic and kind to us. So that's top leadership-type of behavior, and I really appreciate that. But I've said this before, this is not a matter for the police to enforce. It's demonstrably unsuccessful to rely on that.
Absolutely. Chief, what do you think an estimated time for the reoccupancy aspect to come through?
I would say... Let me speak to Director Tordi, who's been working on the report, and then I will have a firm idea tomorrow, I would say.
So Jackie, just put that on those for us to follow up with. So Ms. Talib, I know we have her information. Just make sure you have the right information, and we'll follow up regarding that, because over the last meeting that we had, I believe everything was in the process, going through. Nothing new has changed. Nothing else has happened.
No. I'm grateful that we have no other issues on top of the ones I've stacked up before you today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember El Sawafi. God bless you, and I hope you have a safe return. And I also wanted to thank Councilmember Hamud again for taking the time after a long day to come and visit my mom and I at our home. Your presence and your visibility and your representation in the community, both of you, means a great deal to me. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other resident here like to come up and speak to the council regarding city business? If you don't have a card, you can still step forward and speak. Okay, at this time, then, we will conclude our council 30-minute allotment for the beginning. And Mr. Clerk, we will proceed to the first item of business. Thank you.
Item number five, resolution in need of offer and support, approving all the items of the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Mr... Yeah, we... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, there is an offer by Councilman Hamud. Mr. Clerk, though, for the record, Councilman El Sawafi has taken all these off... All the offers on this and the next items for Councilwoman Herrick, that is not here tonight.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. So on the consent agenda, we have an offer by Councilman Hamud.
I'll support.
Supported by Councilman Abraham. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El Sawafi.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Five yays, the resolution passes.
Okay. And it is with immediate effect?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
So now we'll move on, pass the consent agenda on to item number 13. Resolution by Councilmembers El Sawafi and Paris approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of September 13th, 2022.
Okay, is there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the minutes? Okay. If hearing none unanimous, we'll be attached next item, please.
Item 14, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Paris, authorizing to increase the current budgeted staffing levels by one full-time office assistant two position in the amount of $55,000 annually, including benefits. Also authorizing to reduce the current budgeted staffing levels by removing two part-time positions, one office support, three and departmental specialists. Further authorizing the finance director to process this changes in the Department of Public Works and Housing Division, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. This request is to authorize for an increase in current budgeted staffing levels from... By one full-time position, eliminating two part-time positions within the DPW Housing Department. One full-time employee with an annual salary of $55,000, including the benefits. This will change the salary and will cost an additional $5,275,000, and will be absorbed by other vacant positions with no additional increase to the current budget. This position is to improve efficiencies and services provided to residents of the Hubbard Manor East and Hubbard Manor West, and will provide consistent availability to service residents during the business hours. This also is requesting immediate effect. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none unanimous? Councilman El Sawafi?
Thank you, Council President. So I'm happy to hear that we're moving in the direction of more full-time positions. I believe this really helps with improving continued relationships with city residents and employees, and obviously reduce overall turnover and helps build a more cohesive team with the administration. But just some more details on the office assistant two. Can you touch on that position, some of its duties and responsibilities? What can residents expect out of this position?
Okay, Councilman El Sawafi has a question. Is that for the DPW director?
Sure.
Yeah. One second, Councilman. We're going to have him come up to give you the different... To give you the explanation of it.
Good evening. Tim Hawkins, DPW director. Yes, this office assistant two is an occupancy office assistant two. It will process applications for all of our senior housing buildings. It will follow up with complaints and anything that has to do with the customer interaction. We had two part-time positions, and we played the game of trying to keep them on for a 40-hour work week, make them reliable, and that was difficult. We figured that there'll be a lot more responsive service if we have a dedicated 40-hour person to handle these issues for occupancy.
I think that's definitely... Yeah. Councilman El Sawafi?
No, I really appreciate that. And I know, you know, having part-time positions and somebody trying to keep track of issues, and then they didn't start with tracking the issue, and it falls over to somebody else. Sometimes, things fall through the cracks. So I appreciate having somebody full-time and really keep up with the needs of our senior citizens. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Director Hawkins. Yeah, that's been the trend, as Councilman El Sawafi has indicated of the new administration, where we can reduce part-time with a full-time position, and I think this one fits perfect. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing is seen none, a unanimous roll, we attach next item, please.
Item 15, resolution by Councilmembers El Sawafi and Hamud, awarding a contract to Drummond Carpenter in the amount not to exceed $40,000 for green stormwater infrastructure to be completed by December 31st, 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. Drummond Carpenter are experts in integration of green storm infrastructure, GSI, with existing storm water and have completed GIS visioning studies around Michigan for more than 20 communities. They will be providing technical advice to the city and implementation and integration of GSI into road and parking lot improvement projects to reduce stormwater runoff. This contract will provide the city with experts and offer a number of advantages over traditional engineering. This contract is to not exceed $40,000 and is requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item?
I'll make a comment.
Councilman Hamud?
So just to kind of explain this one and why it's a little different than the stormwater study. So this is kind of short-term. So we have... As people who follow along with us may know, the city has a bunch of projects in the pipeline as is. And since the in-depth, long-term stormwater study is going to take somewhere around the ballpark of two years.[1593.86] And since the in-depth, long-term stormwater study is gonna take somewhere around the ballpark of two years. So what the city has decided to do in the meantime is to bring on people who understand green stormwater infrastructure to help implement some of those methods and policies with the existing projects that we currently have. So I think this is thoughtful because it allows us to immediately start to implement those kinds of policies and engineering methods to the current stuff that we were already going to do anyway. So I really appreciate this item from, looks like, Director Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. And as you stated, it allows us to not, you know, throw good money on bad as we're doing stuff as you're indicating. We can see a different way maybe to do other things that we are already contracted for that will mitigate the water problems. It's just another part in the big puzzle, so I do appreciate that.
Council President, if I may?
Yeah, one second. Councilman El-Sawafi?
Thank you, Council President. No, this is definitely a good step in the right direction. And we've all suffered in one way or another from flooding in Dearborn. It's a sensitive topic for the residents and without a priority for the administration. I like to kind of get a sense and keep tab of the past, of the path forward. I understand that, was it Drummond Carpenter has done some of this work in the past with twenty or more communities. I'd like to get some examples of the projects they've done and a sense of which of those projects we'd like to implement in Dearborn. If possible.
Yeah, Councilman, I think the chief might answer that, but we did have that in the briefing session, which I know we didn't have the communications for you to participate in that side. But Councilman Paris just reminded me, Councilman, what city? Patoski. There were several cities where they implemented some of the study's recommendations during their current projects. And that's why the mayor was very impressed with it, and we also felt that was a good idea. But in the backup, there was some more information, if you were able to retrieve that.
I'll take a look. What I've seen was just basically the summary, the executive summary, but I'll take another look.
Okay, yeah, you know, Councilman, it might have, because we had the briefing session, which in that room doesn't have the communications for you. Maybe that's where it was lost. But Chief, did you have something I wanted to add? Chief, is that?
Thank you, Council President, for Councilman El-Sawafi. We'll make sure he gets that information if it isn't in his backup information. I'd just like to bring a little more color to Councilman Hamud's comment regarding the administration's projects. We have a few projects in the pipeline that are going to address one of the top priorities of this administration, and I'm sure of the council as well, which is flooding. And I think just to bring a little more clarity on this project in particular is when we're talking about some of the previous items that we've brought in front of the council, which will really dictate projects that, you know, studies that will really give us more insight about the issue at hand. This project in particular is going to be more forward-facing. As we look at projects that we're working on currently that are in the pipeline, this gives us the insight of the information that we need to incorporate green infrastructure that will help flood mitigation. Again, flooding being top of mind and a priority of this administration, of course, of this council as well. So Patoski, for those who are interested, I would definitely take a look. That report is available online. There are some wonderful, different projects that they've incorporated that we would definitely like to bring here at the city of Dearborn. So just wanted to add a little bit of context to that.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Councilman El-Sawafi, you have any other question on this item?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item from my colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item sixteen, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Abraham approving the schools resource officers inter-local agreement with Dearborn Public Schools for five years with automatic renewals for five-year periods and requesting immediate effect.
Sir, thank you. The Dearborn Public Schools District has requested enhanced police protection services at the public schools by designating five resource officers, SROs, for ten months for the year to patrol the school premises. The Dearborn Public Schools will reimburse the full salaries and benefits for each of the officers over the ten-month period. The SRO program will be managed by the Dearborn Police Department's Youth Bureau Investigation Division and will ensure an effective partnership between the Dearborn Public Schools and the city of Dearborn that we've had for years. This agreement will also provide the safest school experience for our Dearborn students while limiting the fiscal impact on the police department with the contract to not exceed five hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement. It is also requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item?
I just have a comment.
Councilman Abraham?
And I'd like to ask the chief to come up if he could. We had a conversation, and I think he had a better, more thorough explanation of how the cap on the contract is actually gonna be used, that not to exceed versus a straight five hundred thousand. If you could explain that to everybody, please.
Good evening. Isa Shaheen, Chief of Police. The contract's written not to exceed five hundred thousand, but it'll be billed on a monthly basis for the costs of those officers. And depending on whether or not it's a Chapter twenty-three officer, a murder's employee, a corporal, or an officer at a lower pay scale, it would modify what it costs that month. So they're actually being charged the actual cost that's incurred to have them there. And the estimated cost, depending on how they do it, it's for ten months, right? If they want to have someone for summer school, it could be a bill for the summer. But, you know, we estimate coming around four hundred thousand, but it could go, you know, somewhere within that range. But it's not to exceed five hundred. That's why it's written that way. Was that clear enough? Sorry. I kind of jumped off my answer, but.
Yeah, I did, because the Councilman Abraham brought that up, and the mayor was adamant at the committee of the whole that it was a five hundred thousand dollar contract. When I read the contract myself, I know, you read it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I read the contract as well, and I understood what they said not to exceed because it is a billing aspect. And I'm sure that the school system wanted to have a cost.
A cap.
A cap for their benefits. And for our residents to understand, we've been providing similar service at no cost to the schools for years. And under the new administration, I believe this is the right way to go, that we are recouping our costs for our police officers. Is that a fair statement?
Hundred percent. I couldn't agree more.
Like any others.
Right, yes. So, but the Councilman Abraham's question, and the mayor did indicate that the contract was for five hundred thousand. When I did read it, the contract is not to exceed that amount. So now it makes more sense, Councilman. And since there is different levels of police officers' rates and since there's reimbursement, it makes sense that it's not to exceed five hundred thousand.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilman, are you good with that?
Yes.
Chief, thanks a lot. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. Just one comment, especially for people in the audience, let alone at home. I know we were briefed on some of this, and I believe I asked a question about the other schools. And I know you could be in a position to answer that, but of course, there are other schools here in Dearborn that the SROs would be responsible for, but what about other non-public schools?
So, Councilman Paris, we're in the process of reaching out to all of the charter schools, parochial schools, and non-public schools with an equitable way to finance an additional school resource officer. If they should be in agreement with that, starting January first, we would hire a sixth SRO and then backfill that spot so we can also properly staff the patrol division as well.
Okay, and it's my understanding that last week at the Dearborn Public Schools Board meeting, it was approved also?
It was unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman, for your comments. I knew that we did, or I think you did bring that up in the committee of the whole, and I'm glad that they are looking at a similar model so that we can recoup our costs for the taxpayers. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item seventeen, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Paris authorizing the Finance Department to recognize funds in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand sixty-nine dollars in constitutional state revenue sharing budget and cancel funds in the amount of sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars in statutory state revenue sharing budget and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and the state has two different revenue sharing aspects. The adopted state revenue, shared revenue for twenty twenty-three budget was based on the state of Michigan Treasury publications available at the time of budgeting. Due to the twenty-twenty U.S. Census population adjustment, the state posted updated estimates, and the new state shared revenue calculation resulted in an increase to the city. The Finance Department is requesting to recognize seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand sixty-nine dollars in constitutional state revenue sharing and canceling sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars in statutory state revenue sharing budget for a net gain to the city of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars to be placed in our general fund. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item eighteen, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Paris adopting the E and A Salary Plan Amendments approved by the Civil Service Commission on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this proposed salary plan adjustments for the execution of, I'm sorry, for the executive administrative group. The proposal was approved by the Civil Service Commission on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. For the first time, just for a highlight for some of the residents, the city employees will be granted up to eight weeks of paid parental leave following a birth of an employee's child or an adoption or foster care, which was not in the, not in the current plans for our current employees. So I think that was a welcome change to it. Is there any questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I'll comment on the next item.
Okay. Councilman Paris, are you good?
No, I'm good.
Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item nineteen, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Hamud adopting the tentative agreement between the city of Dearborn and the Police Officers Association of Michigan, known as POAM, representing the Police Dispatch Supervisors Union effective July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this tentative agreement between the city of Dearborn and the Police Officers Association of Michigan, POAM, representing the Police Dispatch Supervisors, the tentative agreement was ratified by the union on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and they are requesting immediate effect. Questions or comments on this item? Councilman Hamud?
I know Councilman Paris is also very passionate about this, but I'm gonna comment on some specific stuff and I'll leave some for you, too. Are you gonna?
You're up.
Okay. So I think, so on this new contract, some of the stuff that I think I'd like to highlight for residents and for people at home, the council, like some of the details that I was very happy about. I think, like Council President mentioned on the last item, I think eight weeks of parental leave. I never realized the city of Dearborn never had any kind of parental leave. And so I'm very big on that personally because I think that's the type of thing when it comes to real family-friendly policies that I really hope the city continues to kind of encourage. And I'd also like to point out that it also includes people who, you know, receive a child placement through like adoption or foster care. So we count that as well as, you know, part of bringing families together and helping people kind of get acclimated to those kinds of situations, whether it be a new child or, you know, bringing in a new family member. So I really appreciate that part of the contract. And then also from a, you know, more diverse perspective, I also really appreciated that Eidul Fathir and Eidul Atha were added as contractual holidays. Because I know, you know, sometimes people may not feel comfortable expressing those kinds of things in their workplace if it's not, you know, recognized by their coworkers, you know. I think I really appreciate these steps toward inclusivity and kind of a more modern approach to the government. So I do really appreciate that from our labor negotiator and our mayor. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. Just to reiterate what our kind Councilman just said a moment ago, the one thing that I'd like to expound upon, though, is the eight weeks of paid leave. I mean, under family leave, you know, there is a certain amount of time allotted for, you know, parents and so on, you know, for a newborn child or adoption, things of that nature. But the city is actually now eight weeks of paid leave. That's pretty significant, you know, in and of itself. What I did want to say, and kind of going hand in hand with a prior contract with our police dispatchers, bargaining unit, this is the supervisors, they've got a thankless job. You know, just think for a moment, every time that you pick up that phone and call for a dispatch, police, fire, EMS, that person's on the other line, and sometimes they don't know the result. Just think for a moment, what they're trying to do, get the information. You're very emotional. People are in trouble. They want help. And now help is on the way, but sometimes they don't even see the end result. So it's very stressful for them, let alone being shorthanded a lot. We need to come up to the table and make sure that our employees are adequately compensated. And this was below market for the supervisors and the police, or the police dispatchers. So I'm really happy to see that the city went this way and really recognized our dispatch center with our supervisors and our dispatchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Paris concurring in the appointment of Gary Kalasus to the Senior Citizens Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Sir Clerk, thank you for that. So we have a couple of appointments that I wanted just to make sure that we recognize the people that are being appointed and thank them for their service. The commissions of the city of Dearborn are very important. They have an important role. And they do advise the council, the mayor, and many aspects of our city's boards and commissions. So it has been recommended for approval appointment for Gary. How do you pronounce that, George?
Kalasus.
Kalasus, to serve as a senior citizens commission for a five-year term. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-one, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Paris concurring in the appointment of Yusuf Sukari to the Dearborn Housing Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and requesting immediate effect.
Yes, again, another appointment for the Housing Commission. And Mr. Sukari, we'd like to thank you for his ability and willingness to serve, a five-year term. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-two, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and El-Sawafi concurring in the appointment of Steve Guybor to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you again. And Mr. Guybor, Steve Guybor, a friend of many of us here, we do appreciate his willingness to continue to serve. This is a three-year term. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-three, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Abraham concurring in the reappointment of Mary Bruno to the Board of Ethics with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and requesting immediate effect.
Again, we'd like to thank Mrs. Bruno for her reappointment. She's been a long-serving member. I know there were some questions at the committee of the whole regarding the timeframe. I don't know if that was answered, Chief, or for legal counsel, the time of, yeah, how long Mrs. Bruno's been serving. Some questions came up by councilmembers that weren't, are not here tonight, but we had estimated fifteen to twenty years. I don't know if you've heard anything, or if that request made it to your desk.
I would tell you that's accurate as a member of the Board of Ethics.
Yeah, that's right.
And every time I've attended, Mary's been there as the chairwoman of the board. So I recall her attendance being very, very good.
Yeah, I know her very well, and as she's gotten older, I know that she has made sure she's on time. And I know she believes that the Ethics Board is very important to the city. I know we're doing some revamping as well, so it's good to keep her, and we appreciate her service for the next three years. Any questions or comments on this item?
Council President, if I may, because I do remiss if not. Actually, Mary actually came in in person for her interview, which was pretty outstanding, and had an opportunity to learn a little bit more about her and her time on the commission, but also that her husband, previous to her, served on the commission. So just wanted to, you know, upon approval of council, really congratulate Mary on this appointment and really, you know, just echo the sentiments of, you know, being very thankful for her service.
Absolutely. We really do appreciate it. As I indicated before, these are very crucial, and ethics is an important part of the city and operations, so we do appreciate it. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Under new business, item twenty-four, resolution by councilmember Abraham supported unanimously offering condolences to the family of Jay Antalal Patel.
Councilman Abraham?
Thank you. And I apologize in advance for any of the pronunciation errors that I'm about to make, but Jalan, Jalan Talal Patel, I knew him as Mr. Patel for a very long time. Sadly passed away on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at the age of eighty-five. He was born on July fifteenth, nineteen thirty-seven, and grew up in the village of Ranole in Gujarat, India. He was the beloved husband. He was a beloved husband, father, and grandfather. He leaves behind his wife of sixty-two years, Lalidiban, his two children, Doxa Ben and Upandra, as well as several siblings, many nieces, nephews, whom cherish him very much. Jay, or JR, as many of his affectionate friends knew him, earned a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering in India, and he went on to earn a bachelor's degree in industrial engineering from the University of Florida. Designing conveyors was the focal point of his work. Jay embodied the qualities of being a friendly, hard-working, and diligent individual. Service to his community was very important to Mr. Patel as he was involved in several programs helping senior citizens in our area. This work included delivering meals to seniors at their homes as part of the Meals on Wheels program, installing medical alert buttons, and helped to educate seniors by volunteering with the MMAP program, Medicare Medicaid Assistance Programs. In addition, he volunteered to help build the Ishaa Institute of Inner Sciences in Tennessee. He lived a life of service for those around him, and he was simply compelled to help anybody who needed help in our community. Jay's lifelong dedication to his family, friends, and volunteer work has left an incredible mark on our community. He will, we will forever be indebted to him for his positive impact that he had. And he will be remembered as a loving, humble, and thoughtful man. He will be greatly missed by his family and friends, as well as his neighbors, who were all blessed to have known him. And if anybody got to meet Mr. Patel or interacted with him, he was just the kindest, gentlest soul who only wanted to be informed about what was going on in his neighborhood and community and find a way to just continuously make it better. From all of us, we offer our deepest condolences to him and his family.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. I would like to just add on to my relationship with Mr. Patel, and I appreciate you getting that information for his family. Mr. Patel, for me, I met him, a very, very intelligent man and very, very detailed, as a lot of engineering folks are. I enjoyed a really good time with him when I first met him at our Elder Fest, and I was sponsoring the waltz, and we had a program where the longest-standing marriage would win, like a, I forget what it was, it was some type of certificate. And I remember presenting it to him and thanking him, and he said, you know, I win every year because we're the longest married couple. I said, well, what do you think? Should we change it? And he said, yes, I think you should change it. Mr. Patel was a stand-up man, a very, very thankful man, as Councilman Abraham had indicated, and really did care about his community. And when there was issues, he would be the first one to call the council or write the council and let them know how he felt in a very professional and profound way. He's gonna be sorely missed, Mr. Patel. As Councilman Abraham indicated to all, we have our condolences to the city council. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Before the next item, if you don't mind, can I say a word or two about Mr. Patel?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely, Mr. Clerk. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I was able to attend his funeral at the Hindu temple in Canton. And at that ceremony, I presented the special recognition that the council gave.
Excellent.
And so they were very much happy to receive that, and they wanted me to thank the council, council president, and the rest of the council members that signed that sympathy resolution for him because the family knew how much he was dedicated to the city of Dearborn. So they prefer, they were very happy to see that it was reciprocated back to the family in the form of that citation. And so it was very heartfelt condolences that they gave back to us to thank the council once again. He was a great man. I've known, I knew him for fifteen years. I've known, I knew him for 15 years. He came up to Lansing quite a bit for senior events. He was a big senior advocate, as was mentioned, and really cared about helping seniors in any way possible. He was a big political machine in his mind as well, because he wanted to know everything about everybody. So we were frequent, he called me almost on a weekly basis, wanted to know what was the latest on elections, and how many registered voters we have, and we need to do better with that. And he was on my case quite a bit, but in a friendly way.
Yeah.
And I will miss him tremendously, because he was a companion to have him call me on a weekly basis, to just to stay in touch. He really appreciated people, especially elected officials, getting back to him and telling him that he was important, because not too many people have that opportunity to have an elected official to do that. But having the mayor and the council do that for him meant the world to him. So the family wanted to represent, to say that as well, to thank the council.
Well, Mr. Clerk, I really appreciate it, and I'm glad that you had an opportunity to share your thoughts on your time with Mr. Patel. And I am very glad and honored that you were able to present the council sympathy resolution. And we worked really hard as a council body and our council staff to have those ready on the spot to provide to families and let them know that we were thinking about them in this time. And I'm glad that that was well received, and I appreciate you being able to take it out there for them. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be honest, I did not know about Mr. Patel until tonight about his passing, and I'm really sad to hear this. And, you know, my wife is at home probably watching this meeting, too. She knows exactly who Mr. JR Patel is, because we had a lot of conversations when I was first running for council, and then after getting on council, he would call, and it would be a long phone call. And if he left a message, it was a long message, and, you know, definitely got back to him and so on. But he was so passionate about living in the city and holding my feet to the fire that, what are you going to do about this problem? Let me tell you what you should be doing, and then you tell me if you're able to do it, and then expound upon that. But I'm really saddened by this passing, and I'm definitely going to miss some of the conversations, even if most of it was just on the phone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman El-Sawafi.
Yeah, I just want to speak to my interactions with Mr. Patel as well. I know when I was running for office, he would call me and grill me with a lot of questions, and I just really felt his passion through the phone. And I'm, you know, very sorry to hear of his passing, which I learned of today, but he was very passionate, asked all the right questions. And I remember one day I was door knocking, and I spoke to him at least maybe 30 minutes on the phone, where he asked a lot of questions, and I really appreciated that from him.
Absolutely. And again, to all, we, our condolences from the city of Dearborn and the City Council and the clerk's office as well to his family. Mr. Clerk, we have the next item, please.
Yeah, we have a couple walk-on items. Number 25 is a resolution in need of offer and support, having no objection to the Dearborn, or I'm sorry, the Divine Child High School to host their homecoming parade on Friday, October 7th, 2022, with assistance from the Police Department, subject to all applicable ordinances, rules, and regulations of the Dearborn Police Department, and reimbursement of city services, and requesting immediate effect.
Offered, yeah. I'm sorry, Councilman. It was offered by Councilman Paris and then, yeah, supported by Councilman Abraham. Thank you. All right, so Divine Child, 22, homecoming parade, yearly event. We are trying to get it in for them so that it has immediate effect, Mr. Clerk, so they can proceed with the parade. Residential streets that will be affected for a short timeframe between 5:40, 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. would be North Silver Lane, Cogburn, North Denwood, and Wilson on October 7th. The Dearborn Police will provide the traffic control and escort the entire duration of the parade route as normal, and the Divine Child High School will reimburse the police services to the city of Dearborn. Again, this is requesting immediate effect, and it was offered by Councilman Paris and supported by Councilman Abraham. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 26, resolution in need of offer and support, requesting to accept the 2021 assistance to firefighter staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant from the 2021 Federal Management Agency in the amount of $3,780,230 for the hiring of 12 firefighters, including personnel costs and fringe benefits. Also requesting that the finance director be authorized to recognize and appropriate funds in relation to this award, and requesting immediate effect.
All right. The chief, I'm sorry, the Fire Department received a highly competitive federal emergency grant and the award of $3,780,230.16 with no city match or contributions for the 2023 through 2025 budget cycle. The purpose of the assistance of the firefighter grant program is to protect the health and safety and public of our firefighter personnel against fire and fire-related hazards. The Dearborn Fire Department will use the grant money to hire 12 new firefighters and increase the total Fire Department staffing from the current budget of 143 sworn full-time employees to 151 sworn full-time employees. The grant money will be used to cover our already budgeted positions, saving the city approximately $1,267.72, requesting immediate effect. Chief, I know that you're very familiar with this. I know we spoke this morning a couple times regarding the grant, and I know that you were the actual writer of the grant in the past. So if you'd like to just expound a little bit for our residents on what this actually means for our Dearborn residents.
Sure. This is an annual FEMA grant, competitive grant. We put it in December for this position. We wrote for 12 firefighters at that time, hoping, you know, obviously as we went through the budget process, hoping that we could reduce some of the impact on the general fund in the Fire Department. And we're fortunate enough to get an award for three years. It's a $3.7 million grant, which will allow us to bring on 12 new firefighters, as you said, because currently we are four short. We are 139 of 143, so we are going to actually save $1.2 million as part of this grant and get additional firefighters. So there's no match at all to the city. The only thing that we had requested within this was just some additional funds for turnout gear and radios for the new members coming on. But outside of that, there's no cost to the city, and we're going to save about $1.2 million over three years.
Well, I really appreciate it, Chief. I know that, you know, I was a big supporter in the beginning, and now we have a grants department just for this particular one. I'm sure you had some expertise on it, but did our grants department also weigh in on this, or was this prior to them taking?
So we applied for this one in December, but I'd like to make mention of, so I know you always comment on my grant writing.
Yeah, I do.
For efficiency, I appreciate that.
You do have a PhD, too, which a lot of people do not know.
Yeah, I do, yes. But I just wanted to say, though, so over my 10 years, this is going to be about $20 million worth of grant funds for us. That being said, our new grants department, Nicole Hefty, aside from being a wonderful person, I mean, she's already eclipsed what I've done in 10 years and six months, so kudos to her. She's doing great, and very, I think you're going to look back on that decision to bring her on board many years from now and say that was one of the best things we've done.
Absolutely. Well, I remember, Chief, and I think Councilman Abraham, I know was here when I was here, and I remember when you asked for approximately $40,000 for an additional assistant to help you so that you could write grants. And I know there was some resistance. You know, we can ask a lot of questions up here. I'm sure you remember those.
Oh, I remember. And I appreciate that, and I'd be remiss to not thank Sally, because I write the grants, but these, you have to have your hands on these grants every day, and she puts a lot of time and effort in with these. So, and on top of the COVID and the flood grant she's been working on all year, she's been crazy busy, but she does tremendous work for us.
No, I really appreciate it, Chief, and I wanted to highlight it, because, you know, that part where we, you know, gave you the extra $40,000, I had mentioned it two or three years later, that we already paid back three or four million dollars. People ask a lot of time, how are you going to cut taxes if you can't cut services and so on and so forth, which, you know, you know my stance on that. But there's also a way to grow your city as well by getting grant opportunities, which, by the way, is our money. And a lot of people don't see that, but it goes into your federal taxes when you see that on the...
And state taxes.
And your state taxes, and it goes off. We're very fortunate that our mayor has good experience in that and seen the force to bring us a department. But there is ways to bring money into Dearborn, not coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. And I do appreciate this very much, because I know in December, unless you were just playing close to the cards, we weren't sure we were going to get this grant.
Yeah, absolutely.
Am I right?
Yeah, absolutely. We didn't know until just last week.
Right, yeah. And it, I'm very pleased that we were able to get to, because it does help us tremendously get our staffing levels where we need to be and where our residents expect it to be. So I wanted to make sure we highlighted it. For my colleagues...
I'll offer.
It was offered by Councilman Hamud and supported by Councilman Abraham. It was walked on because it was a late item that was officially approved, and I do appreciate that as well, because we don't want to prematurely approve things that have not gone through the process. But thank you, Chief, for letting us know in a timely manner, and we did submit it to all councils. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous rule will be attached. Next item.
Nothing further from the clerk's office.
All right, great. So at this time, we are going to turn it over to the council. I do not have anything to add at this time. Any of my colleagues have anything to add? Councilman Abraham?
If I could, just want to remind people, the ninth annual Pat DiAmbrosia pasta for the animal shelter will be Monday, October 10th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Park Place. There will be, obviously, the traditional seated dinner, but also this year, offering carryouts in respect for the COVID pandemic and people that are being respectful and sensitive to avoiding crowds and indoor activities. If anybody needs tickets, they can contact the animal shelter or Pat DiAmbrosia himself. Tickets are $35, and 100% of the proceeds will go directly to support our friends and animals at the shelter.
Absolutely. I've been to several of Pat's with my wife, and some of my kids sometimes are gone. If you haven't had Pat's spaghetti, it's not Pat's cheese steaks in Philly, but it's some good spaghetti. And he does, Councilman Abraham, am I right? He's made for me marinara sauce, too, because I don't know what's in some of that sauce he has. But the marinara sauce has been great, and he does a great job. And I was aware that it was proceeds for the animal shelter, but I didn't know fully, because I know he does other...
He covers all the cost, and then...
Right.
All the sauce is homemade.
Homemade, yeah.
He's been baking, cooking, whatever he does there to get ready, and then serve it on Monday night.
Absolutely. So we, hopefully, will see you guys all there at his event. It's at Park Place?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Anything else for my colleagues? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. One thing that I want to bring up, what people may not be aware of, is every morning, the council receives crime briefs of what happened in the city, you know, for the prior 24 hours, and then we get it on Monday for the weekend.
Yep.
What I wanted to say is to our police department, you know, I'm seeing on social media recently, we were all aware of the armed robbery of the pharmacy in East Dearborn, which resulted in a crash with a Dearborn police vehicle, and one of our officers was hurt. You know, I did not know by reading some of the social media that an officer was in fact hurt, you know, several days ago, until several days ago, when I got the brief and I immediately contacted the commander that gave us that brief and asked about his condition and so on. The reason why I'm bringing this up, people, is we have to appreciate our police and fire and what they're doing in this community. I mean, there's a lot of comments on social media, an awful lot of it is not correct. And I'm telling you, it isn't. There is crime in this city, and we do have some problems. We've got problems with drugs. I totally understand that. I get it. But just be cognizant that officers and firefighters and the EMTs, they're out there doing their jobs, and they get hurt. And when they hurt, we all hurt. The community suffers as a result. So thank you for some of the people who had a lot of good comments to say, wishing well for the officer, and I know he's out of a hospital, but thank you so much for everything that you do for the community. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilman Paris. We do appreciate it, and I usually don't read the comments, and I'm glad that we did. And I think, Councilman Paris, you were around, but not in your official capacity. But when I joined the council, I was from the school where my mom was on the council, where we, my mom actually had police radios and knew every single run. And that became a legal issue, because you could almost testify to issues that were happening on time. So on my term, I had requested that we did get this report. I think it's called Significant Bulletins Report. It's a report that the chief does for the next working shift, and I am very pleased that I did get support from my council when I brought the initiative out, and it has been instituted and has been working, and I'm glad that you do read it, because that's the truth, right? That's the truth. And I'm glad that our current chief continued the process. We do get it daily, and it does help the council understand what crimes are happening where, and it does give you a good picture of what's going on. But I don't know about the comments. I wouldn't read the comments too much again.
I wouldn't.
I like to look at what really happened, but we hope that the officer's doing well, and we, again, of course, we do acknowledge that our men and women are out there working on a daily basis, so we do appreciate that. Anything else for my colleagues? Anything from the administration, Chief?
Council President?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman El-Sawafi. I apologize.
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick question. I know several residents reached out with questions on the process of street closures once there's a block party. Some residents voiced their concern that they didn't know there was a block party that was happening, and they were kind of locked in within their own street, and they couldn't get out. But I just wanted to hear from the administration or whoever on what is the process of notifying residents of a closure on their street, if there is a process.
Thank you, Councilman El-Sawafi. Chief, are you able to answer that one? Mr. Clerk, you have some insight on this?
Of course.
Okay. They've got to come for you. They're for the purpose, yeah. Okay, Mr. Clerk. Chief, this is, I'm sure you might have, just to begin with the speech, Councilman El-Sawafi is asking regarding block parties when the block is shut down, what the process for notification. We're going to let the clerk start off on that aspect.
So, yeah, block parties are handled through the clerk's office. One part of the process is they have to contact engineering to find out if any roads are going to be worked on for any particular reason. And if the roads are going to be clear, then the resident that is applying for the block party must have signatures from at least 50% of the neighbors. And if they get that 50%, then they are allowed to have the block party. Sometimes they fall short, and we tell them they can't have the block party until they get 50% of the signatures, and then once they do, of course, then the block party is allowed.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Clerk, and I know you check the signatures. I know you do that with the...
Yep.
So I know you have the ability to do that, so we do appreciate that, and...
That's exactly what I was...
Was that what you were going to say?
Yeah.
All right.
I could have said it better myself.
I didn't want to put words in your mouth. And Councilman El-Sawafi, I hope that answers you. 50% of the residents will be notified for sure. The others might have had noticed, but not sure if they were accepting of it. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
That does. That does. Thank you so much. I just wanted to add one more thing, though. I really just want to say from the bottom of my heart to all the Dearborn residents, my council colleagues, staff, and administration, family and friends, thank you for your helpful prayers and well wishes and your accommodations. It really means a lot, and I look forward to continuing to serve our Dearborn residents and the citizens of this great country. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman El-Sawafi. We really appreciate you being available and your time. So many people do know this is a volunteer, this job is, has a pay stipend, but Councilman El-Sawafi is not receiving additional funds for this time, because he is taking this duty on as a civic duty, where the council has rules that are governed by the LOCC, which prohibits council members to receive any type of stipend or pay for the meetings when they are not actively here after four or five meetings. So, Councilman El-Sawafi, we appreciate your service to our country and, of course, our city, and look forward to having you regularly on these Zoom meetings. Thank you. Chief?[1713.01] Chief?
My honor, sir.
Excellent, thank you. Chief of Staff?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just a few announcements from the administration. I'd like to first offer a congratulations. I think one thing that we do in Dearborn very well is we have great soccer teams, and one that I'd like to highlight today and congratulate is the Mason Club, the team El Shabab El Yaman, who won the Yemeni-American State Cup on September 5th. So just wanted to extend a congratulation from the administration. Also, I'd like to just, to remind folks that if you didn't see it already, the, and this is pretty cool because I'd like to mention this story because I think when we rolled out the Dolly Parton Imagination Library for the city of Dearborn, which is very unique to the, one of the state of Michigan, and it's only a handful of few across the country. It just shows the, the commitment of the administration. I just want to take it back a little bit to how the, this actually all started, and I think it really does start when the mayor was a state representative and he secured funding that he created into an endowment. And, you know, to fast forward three years, it's truly, it was wonderful to see his reaction because this is truly generational change, and, you know, seeing something that you work so hard to put and actually see it grow and see how quickly people have received it. So just want to just extend the congratulations to the city of Dearborn for having something that really is not something that other communities have, but also having the access to the, the books, which you can, I'm sorry, you can actually go to our website, thecityofdearborn.org, and register your child at zero to five years old, which means your kid will actually have a full library in their home by the age of five. So please, if you haven't already, visit our website and make sure that you, you get your child registered on and ensure that they get their books. Also, I just want to mention that this past Friday, Mayor Hamud, one, was actually awarded from the University of Michigan Dearborn, the Difference Maker alumnus of the year, which is pretty cool. Again, that's one of ours, right? The city of Dearborn really being amplified. Someone from the city was born and raised, and it just shows the prime town that we have. And last but not least, I'm so excited to be the one that gets to announce this because I just get to, is I'd like to wish happy birthday to Councilwoman, uh, Councilmember Erin Burns, who's not with us today, but wanted to extend that happy birthday. But I'm sure as soon as I stop, we'll get a host of happy birthdays from the council.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much, Chief. Yeah, I mean, our Councilwoman Burns, colleague of mine from, from the beginning, I know that she wanted to, she had an event for her family hosting her, so we want to wish her a very, very happy birthday, and thank you for bringing that up, Chief. In regards to the books, tremendous program. I was on, was not able to attend that time when the mayor rolled it out, but we had talked about it months back. I know it's very passionate for him, and I can tell you, everybody knows, you know, when, the more you read, the higher your education level is, and I don't want to misstate the numbers, but I'm, I'm thinking it's 60 books will be delivered. Is that right, the number?
That's correct.
Yeah. I remember him talking about it because he was very passionate about it when we talked about it months ago. But, you know, my granddaughter, I told my daughter-in-law, she said, I already signed up. I go, okay, good. A book, it's a book every few months. I don't want to give the wrong information, but it's mailed right to your house, so I don't want to lose that to the, to the residents. The book is mailed right to your house, zero to five years old, and as the chief had indicated, 60 books, you have a library of books for your child. And that is something, when, when people say to you, why do you do this? Why do you stay to midnight at these council meetings? Why do you take all these things? Why do you do this public service? That's one of the reasons. This type of endowment that the mayor had, came up with, it, it will impact lives, several lives. There's no question. In the next 15, 20 years, that will impact lives of these children that are reading, and the families will take advantage of it. So there is some good work that we do in the city of Dearborn. I do appreciate the mayor for bringing that forward, and I'm so happy that it is a success. I can't wait to see the numbers. I hope they got enough people to, because I know people are signing up like crazy. And it's still open?
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay. Cityofdearborn.org. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the administration? Okay, at this time, we are going to open it up for our second public comment session. There is public comment cards, but feel free, if you'd like, to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and more than welcome to speak on topics related to the city of Dearborn that we can address. Keep kindly a reminder that the clerk will keep a three-minute limitation for you when you come up. Anyone from the public would like to come up and address the council? Okay, hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion adjourned by Councilman Hamud. We are adjourned.